I think you're muted, but I've seen a few people nod their heads, so I'll take that for approval. So let's go ahead and start. Good morning again, everybody. And I want to thank every one of you for making it to this meeting. You know, this is an extraordinary meeting that we agreed to schedule, to bring in some information, part of the information that we discussed last time on our first meeting. And we had met an assignment and wanted to hear from that. We see Melissa kindly put up that agenda. If you don't mind, Ms. McCarth Smith, if you would pace that agenda again. So we have our agenda for the meeting today. And like we see, we're just going to do introductions and then go straight into the main matter for today. Because we plan to make this meeting short, just one hour. Let's see if we can quickly discuss that and squeeze it within the one hour. So without wasting any much of our time, we can go in straight and do our introductions and work on from there. I will start with myself. My name is Inos Saint Aqua. I am a commission member representing Africa. And I am co-chair of this committee. I'm co-chairing with Dr. Rashid. And that's me. We can move on. The next person I see on my screen is Isabel.
Hi, good morning. This is Isabel Taylor. I am the multicultural affairs coordinator for the Lexington government. I run Global X and I'm in the mayor's office.
Thank you. Melissa, please.
Hi, I'm Melissa McCarth Smith. I work in the mayor's office and I'm here to facilitate the meeting as a staff member.
Thank you. Dr. Rashid. Dr. Rashid is the next person I see. Introduction. Oh, I'm sorry, Rania.
You're muted, Rania.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Rania Bel Madani and I'm the language access specialist at Global X with his office.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Tusha.
Hello, everyone. Ambassador Tusha. I'm the district ambassador for EL refugee Arabic speaking families with 5th County Public School. And my background is in education, healthcare, immigration.
Thank you too. And I see here, Miria. Miria Church.
Hi, everybody. I'm the access and functional needs coordinator with the Division of Emergency Management.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I did not say it at the beginning. Because for each of our meetings, we need to take minutes. I just want to find out if someone helping with minutes, please. And then Isabel.
Yes, I can help you with the minutes.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I see we are recording too. That's fine. Okay, thanks. We're done with the introduction. Is there any other person with us that we did not call out for introduction?
Crystal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Dr. Brody.
I'm Crystal, representing the European countries. And I am in education and English as a second language.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're done with the introductions. And now, next thing on the agenda is the main item of the day. So I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood something a little in our last meeting. I believe that we had talked about what we needed to work on. It was mostly on the pandemic. And one of the items was about myths about the COVID vaccine. And we had agreed that Dr. Bezzar, who had opted that he could gather something, some information about it. I thought it was maybe trying to contact the immigrant communities to get more of what the summer myths are so that we work on it. But if I had understood that differently, Dr. Bezzar corrected me that he was supposed to get information on how to reach out to these immigrant communities. So if you had noticed, I changed the agenda a little to leave it open. So let's see, it's straight from Dr. Bezzar. He had to collect some information and then contact the outreach community. So Dr. Bezzar, it would please get from you what you worked on.
Thank you, Mr. Aqua. And yeah, let me start by saying, I apologize too if I misunderstood. Everything you said now is very accurate. I mean, that was my assignment as I understood it, and that's what I did. The only difference was the outreach committee. The way I understood it is we craft our message and then they help with distribution. So the outreach committee was the only one I haven't been in contact with yet. I actually have a short presentation. I'm not sure. Can I share my screen? Or do I don't think I can. Can you please give me access to do so? Because I have a short presentation that goes with the information I collected that I can share.
Melissa, please, can we do that for him to get access? Is Melissa with us?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I just have like a short presentation I was hoping to share along with the information I collected. I don't have authorization as of now to share material though.
Are you able to share now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Can everyone see this?
Yes, I see.
Okay, so Ms. Taylor was very kind and helpful to help me set a meeting with Dr. Mott and her team. That meeting was very rich in information and suggestion or recommendations. And then she actually sent an invite for an event by Welcome in America, which had a lot of experts from Mayo Clinic, from across the country, about ways to boost vaccine participation and decrease vaccine hesitancies. And with that, an input from the local community, I came up with like a quick presentation. I figured we can discuss the major points in it. We can like modify it if we want. And then hopefully it can serve as a tool that we can reach with outreach committee, with any other community partners. So we can have that like inter-agency communication and have a unified message as a city government. I mean, to start with, I mean, pretty sure we're all familiar with this stuff. Why do we have the COVID vaccine? We have the COVID vaccine because we've had more than 500,000 people dead in the United States so far with, from this new disease. We have roughly 2.5 million people dead with COVID-19 so far worldwide. When I looked at the number last night, it was like 2,900 and like up 900. And I was like, yeah, by the morning, it's going to be more than 2.5 millions. And the fact that we're taking these numbers for granted just like speaks to the gravity of the situation. More than death, we have even more people hospitalized with severe cases than we have the long-term COVID, which we're still just now learning about the effect of this disease long-term. Then, of course, we have the disruption to daily life, to the schools, jobs, economy, leisure, all of that. So this is why we have this whole like COVID-19 situation worldwide, why we have it citywide. But as an individual, now that we have the vaccine, why will I take the vaccine? And this is a campaign that on a city or state level, I'm actually not sure. It started here in Lexington or Kentucky about like, I'm taking the vaccine for something. And I believe this is, A, like the having unified message is great. So we, as an advisory committee, I feel our role is more of making sure the city government's message is tailored and inclusive of the international committee. We're not working, it's not necessarily coming up with our own plan, just making sure that the city plan is best suited to serve that community. And it's even like during the meeting with Dr. Mott's group, they all agreed that this is probably the most effective messaging, the personalized messaging. There's a component that I'll talk about a little bit later, the one that's rich in kind of like information, the ones that's going to tackle the misinformation. But that's a little bit more specific for the people who are who are looking for that information. But a public-centered approach, I believe this, we don't want to like overwhelm with information. So this personalized messaging would probably be best. So I'll take the vaccine for myself because A, I don't want to die from COVID. I don't want to end up in a hospital. And then even as a young adult, a healthy one, I don't want to have to deal with the long-term consequences. Even, you know, things like the loss of taste and smell. I mean, I love food. I don't want to not be able to taste food. With smoking, a lot of time with young people, the fact that it can give them like yellow in their teeth actually is one of the driving factors for young people to stop smoking. So sometimes, especially for like healthy population, it might not, the focus might not necessarily be on the the very grim situation. It might, it can be more of like what can apply to you, even a loss of taste and smell can be pretty grave. I would take it for my family and friends. If I'm healthy, I mean, is my uncle, is my grandma, is my grandpa, are my friends? And sometimes you may not know, because we all, our health information, that's private. So I may not know that my best friend is diabetic. I may not know that my best friend is immunocompromised. So this is something we always need to keep in mind. Then I want to take it for my community. I want to take it for my neighbor. I want to take it for the other parents in my school. I want to take it for the nice people who were welcoming in my city. Again, I don't know what these people are going for. I want to take it for life to return to normal. I mean, we're all overwhelmed. We're all kind of over this pandemic. And then I want to take it to have fun. I want to take it to be able to travel. I want to take it to go to movies. I want to take it to go watch live sports. I want to go take it to go be in a live music concert. So all these reasons are equally valid for different people. And there's always, there's already a message in place with flyers, with pictures of people focusing on, I'm taking the vaccine for this reason. And I feel like this is, the consensus from Dr. Mott's meeting too seemed to be that this is probably the most effective messaging. So we can build on it. We can make sure that we have that campaign in different languages. We can make sure that the people on those flyers look and are dressed like people from our international community. Now, when we start to tackle the reasons for the vaccine hesitancy, but again, the consensus seems to be like the four main points. And this is where the the little bit more like specialized targeted messaging for people who are seeking information will probably need to focus on. The four major ones are efficacy, safety, side effect and cost. So for the efficacy and safety, they're kind of a little bit connected. There are concerns about, well, this was like developed too fast. Like how effective is it? Well, the Pfizer vaccine is 95% effective. The Moderna vaccine is 94% effective. The, and even when they don't, even if you have the vaccine and get the disease, the disease is not as severe. We're not seeing death. We're not seeing hospitalization. It's helping with the spread of the vaccine, which is helping against all those new strains we're hearing about on the news. The South African strain, the Brazilian, the UK and all that stuff. Because then you have less vaccine in the community and you're having less of those chances of like mutations and causing us new strains that can take us back to square one. And then the early data from places that have vaccines, especially Israel, which was the leader in vaccine distribution, we're seeing case plummets, we're seeing hospitalization and death plummets, especially with, like we're not seeing those cases almost at all with people who are vaccinated. So I feel like all this, there need to be like a lot of focus on how really it's amazing how effective these vaccines are. Then we have the safety. We have the concerns on one side that it's a new technology. We've never had an mRNA vaccine before. It was developed too fast and people don't want to be like guinea pigs basically by taking the vaccines. And then you have some people saying, well, if the vaccine is really safe, why are we not giving it to children? Because the vaccines aren't yet approved for children. And the count, the most effective counters for those concerns seem to be that, A, for the safety part, most of the expediency that happened in the development, it happened by expediting a lot of the regulatory steps and not the safety medical steps. And actually, like, yes, the vaccines were developed super fast, but I mean, the economy tanks for a while. It's been almost like a year, nine months by the time we had the vaccine. And really, if they, if there was no cause for safety, we would have done it earlier. We still have some shortage of the vaccine. We have like some vaccines that are being used in other places, like the AstraZeneca stuff, and it's still not FDA approved because the FDA want to make sure they're safe. That's why we're not giving them to children. They, they may be safe, but we haven't checked the safety yet. And that's why they're not being given to children like on a large scale in the community, but there are trials right now. So actually, all these facts support the fact that the vaccines are safe. And plus, there were more than 70,000 people in the Pfizer and Moderna trials combined. So a lot of people did go through the safety process. And I mean, and that's again, can come later in the part of the messaging. Almost all healthcare workers are taking the vaccine. Like the doctor who's telling you to take the vaccine, they took the vaccine themselves. And that's why, which we'll touch on later, the messaging about healthcare workers talking about their personal experiences while taking the vaccine or having themselves like pictured or videotaped while taking the vaccine, like that probably really helped. Then we have the concern about the side effects. That seems what like most people are focusing on. You hear a lot of chatter about like, yeah, the side effects are really horrendous. It's awful. It's like the most sick I've been in like a year or two. Or like, make sure you take it on a weekend. Make sure you take a day off after you take it. And obviously, not everyone has the luxury of being able to take the vaccine. Oh, I'm sorry, to take a day off. Then you have the cost, which the vaccine is free for everyone, but not everyone is aware of that fact. Plus, when you sign up, you're being asked for the health insurance information, which is mainly so they can charge the insurance for administrative costs. And you won't have any out of pocket. But when you don't know and you, when you sign up and you're being asked for healthcare information with all the surprise billing and stuff in the way the healthcare system is concerned, people, if they don't know that sort of fact, they're concerned about cost. So the focus in the messaging about the vaccine is free. If you haven't insured it, if you don't have an insured, the vaccine is free. Some other concerns, there are some religious concerns. The vaccine does not contain any pork products, does not contain eggs, it does not contain any fetal tissue. Soon Ramadan will start. I know there will be some issues about whether vaccine break your fast or not. For people who will have that concern, if they can't take it while they're fasting, that mean they can't take it before like 7:00 PM probably by that time or whatever, which will mean most vaccine distribution clinics will be closed. So that's a factor to be taken into concentration, maybe focused on the communities who might have that concern to try and make sure that we go there either before or after Ramadan. Because you might lose some people who would take the vaccine otherwise. There were some concerns about the registration process. It asks for your social security number for that kind of information. The main goal here is contact tracing. The main goal here, these are new vaccines, want to collect data about people who take the vaccine, then you know what happens after and stuff. But there are a lot of people for various reasons who do not like seeing that request, who do not like provide that information. And again, here comes the importance of explaining that the reason we're asking for this information is for contact tracing and that kind of stuff. And explaining that even if you don't provide it, like that's fine. You'll still be able to sign up. You'll still be able to get the vaccine. And the importance of having that message come from local sources, having that local trust when someone being able to trust the person who's telling you that, because a lot of communities have that institutional and systemic distrust due to a lot of valid historical reasons, which is again, the importance of the local trusted sources in distributing the information. All of that factored into the whole like cost benefit analysis of some people might, again, may say, well, the vaccine, the disease isn't that bad. I have all those concerns about the vaccine, so I take my chances. And again, this ties back to, well, I'm taking it for myself because I don't want the disease, also I don't want the long-term effect. And I'm taking it for all those other reasons as well, that may not relate just to me personally. And then the last, we have the vaccine hesitancies. A lot of is the misinformation. A lot of people talked about how common that those like messages you see on Facebook, on WhatsApp, that are filled with misinformation, like a new rumor or claim seems to be coming up every like couple of days. And this is again, where it shows the importance of countering with trusted sources that's language accessible and culturally appropriate. So how we can do that? It seems like the most effective way is having two, like simultaneous, well, three simultaneous approaches. The first one is simple for the general public, having the flyers that can focus on one unified message across the city government. Because A, it shows that this is not just some like international organization or international group trying to do international outreach. This is my city government counting me as any other local resident. This helps even like beyond the vaccine in general, like with the whole sense of belonging in my community. The, and those flyers, like, again, I feel the best way due to all of that is to use what's already been used, just making sure that the language and who are on them look like our international community, which we'll touch on later. The live discussions and sharing the personal experience, those are the ones that can be a little bit more specific. Those are the ones that, so the flyers, they can focus on the main four points. It's free. It's safe. It's effective. And this is where you can take it. Then if you want to go into the details, assure me it's safe. Tell me how effective it is. Explain to me how it works. Here where it can come through those live discussions between trusted local healthcare professionals. And this can happen, Radio X were very helpful. Victor said, basically, we can only, we only need to provide the people and they'd be helping with recording, distributing the message. There were some concerns about the broadcast doesn't reach the entire city. But then those recordings, those broadcasts, we can distribute them on Facebook Live, WhatsApp, all those other social media that they have a lot of misinformation circling around. So we can have this trusted local information circle instead. Sharing the personal experiences, the positives and the negatives. The, those trusted community members, those trusted healthcare professionals who took the vaccine. Plus, those like, you know, sometimes you hear stories about someone who was very healthy, very young, they had COVID a month ago and they still can't like walk a couple of blocks. They still can't like hold a couple of grocery bags like up the stairs and stuff. It's been a bit probably more of a challenge to have those people share their experiences maybe, but you can find a few who are willing. And I think elevating those experiences too can be useful. And then again, very, very important, having the people who share these things, where you put the flyers, who participate in those discussions, who share their personal experiences. They have to be trusted local community members. We can't just be like sharing CDC like videos and interviews and stuff, which I mean, they have their place, but the most effective messaging comes from local trusted sources. So we can, we can rely on healthcare professionals, religious leaders, teachers, school administrators, community ambassadors, with the outreach community, community leaders in general. Again, outreach community probably can help here. So this is an example, so this, right now, there seems to be two main flyers and campaigns going around for the vaccine. The first one, the city one, the "Let's Do This", they have two main posters. This is the first one. "Let's Do This", "Safe and Effective", it's catchy, it's a great design. For international community, I'd probably honestly prefer if it was kind of, "Let's Get Vaccinated", I don't think, if you're not super aware, I'm not sure how clear what's happening here. There's another version that does kind of explain more that it's about the vaccine. And then the other flyer, which I didn't find. Like I kept looking for it for an hour and I think that last night, I looked for it a bit in the morning. And I think this is a little bit part of the messaging problem that we already have. The one that says, "I'm taking the vaccine for", like I've seen it a day or two ago on Instagram. I saw the downtown Lexington, forgot the exact name, but the organization that's in charge of like promoting downtown businesses and stuff, on their Instagram, on their story, they shared that campaign. Like, "I'm taking the vaccine for my family. I'm taking the vaccine for my school. I'm taking the vaccine for so-and-so." It's very nice. Everyone agreed, it's the most effective message. I Googled it. I looked for it on the city website, the state website. And I, I did not find the flyers. So if like Ms. Taylor or someone can help with that. I feel like those flyers probably, again, making sure that the people who are in them look like our communities, making sure the language accessible, those would probably be the most effective ones. I would suggest adding, and I'm not sure if those ones have "Let's Do This", don't, like a QR or a link for signup. Because there's still a lot of people who don't know how they can sign up for the vaccine and this information keeps changing as we're like getting closer to more mass distribution of the vaccine. Where do we post this information? Where do we share it? Again, like we thought social media is important to counter that misinformation through Radio X, Facebook Live, WhatsApp, like everything. Grocery stores are very important, especially like grocery stores that sells like certain type of grocery stores for certain communities. A lot of people go there. There's like, it feels like its own community. Same for restaurants. Same for restaurants. And I didn't put grocery stores and restaurants together, although they're kind of the same. Because I feel both of them are very big sources that need to be focused on individually. Dr. Mott's group mentioned Keeland and Horse Park. There's a lot of Spanish-speaking people who work in those communities and they show opening to, like in Keeland and the Horse Park, they would like basically give us like information, would gladly post it. Religious centers, schools, again, schools, they have their own system of communicating with parents. It's in their own best interest to not have those outbreaks that disrupt their school days. So they'll probably be open to distributing that information to their families. And then the city resources, the vaccine signup pages, all that. Some like final consideration, there were some concerns that I agree with, that the current approach of first come, first served, usually it shows, this was from the Welcome in America webinar, which I found to be very to the point. That first come, first serve approach usually served to show the inequities that are built into our systems. So I know the mayor's office are working on the mobile unit, that's a great idea, that seems to be the best way to tackle uh, that problem. So we can make sure that that unit goes to certain areas where certain communities congregate, which again, the schools can help with this or the outreach community can help with this. For like the Spanish speaking community, Cardinal Valley was mentioned, Keeland and the horse park, for the Arabic community, I know for example, the Lansdowne Elementary Community, the Kirk Levington Park area, the Federal Department complex, that area, there's a huge cluster for the African community, the Tate's Creek area, the Breckenridge Elementary area. They have a big concentration. Uh, the schools, the churches, again, those local community trusted places and making sure when we go or like when that mobile unit go to a certain area, they have preferably volunteers or personnel who actually speak the language, or at least like material, written materials in those languages. We have to have systematic prioritization of language access, not just rely on volunteers, but have an actual like like have that be the focus, not have the material first being in English or English and Spanish and then like, yeah, let's hope like we find someone nice who like translate or help us with like distributing the message. If we're, if we're focusing on certain area, it needs to be like a central focus that yes, we wanna laser focus on the Japanese speaking community, we'll have all the, all the material or we need like professionally translated. The personal experiences that we talked about the and the like, I got vaccinated sticker, I think if we can have that in multiple languages, that would be great too. Because just having like, especially when we do the mobile unit, when we have a lot of people who live in a certain area, if we have the unit there for the day, if people can get that stickered, I got vaccinated in the language and then they go and you know, they go play with their neighbors, they go and talk someone, they go to like restaurant or the grocery store and stuff and people see that, oh, like what's this and like that can be a great useful tool. And again, focusing on the trusted local sources, which like we talked about. So that mainly like what I came up with. I think it can be like a beginning and if anyone has any like suggestion, recommendations, we can like modify it. And then hopefully that can be a starting point, that can be shared with community partners, with the outreach community, with the health department, with like whoever, so they can use that as a starting tool to focus on outreach for our international community.
Hey Basil, that's, you really put something really great together there and thanks for all your work. I just have two little points, one of them on the slide, why should I be vaccinated? Maybe to participate in my faith community. Because that's important for many communities, you know.
That's, that's very, yeah, that's very true.
And then the other thing is, and this, this is not something to add, but some challenge for us. I, um, many, many people like me who came here from another country watch their home news, home media and talk with their families, the Broadway. And there's so much different messaging going on, you know, so we're, we're having an uphill battle. As many of our countries have, you know, messaging that's contrary or not supportive of our messaging here. And like at my family, people are so misinformed and they believe wholeheartedly like, please don't get vaccinated, please, you're gonna die, you know. I mean, begging me on their knees not to get vaccinated. And that's another type of messaging, why, why should they believe Fayette County City Government more than the people that whom they love, you know. So that's another challenge.
Exactly. And honestly, that's why I felt that focusing on the personal experience a lot helps, because I had the same thing in my family. I have an uncle and an aunt who live like northeast and they were, they're both, you know, the type who are a little bit like skeptical of these kind of things in government and stuff. And at the beginning, when like the vaccine rollout like first started, I didn't, they never like said it bluntly, because like they knew I, my family were like super pro vaccine, but you can hear it in the way, you know, in their tone and stuff, they were like very skeptical, like no, 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 no. And then my aunt's sister, she and her boyfriend, they got COVID about two months ago. And it was bad case, they both ended up in the hot, like the hospital for a couple of days. And now both my uncle and aunt, they had, they got their vaccine and they can't wait for the second dose. And so it's all like when it hits close to home, that's always when we're seeing that perspective shift and hopefully hearing it from people that you know versus like a CDC representative, hopefully that helps.
But thanks for all your work on, on this and you really put a lot of time into it, thank you.
So can I ask a question, Basil? Uh, with respect to how radically, you know, their, their perception of the vaccine changed once they had that experience with their niece and nephew in the hospital with it. Is, would they be open to being filmed and videotaping? Because that is a powerful message uh, to get out there for a very large community.
I can ask, um, honestly, like I can't make any promises, you know, and because they live in Boston too. So if they will, like it would probably be them recording themselves and sending it, but no, I'll definitely ask. And I'll get back here, and I agree, this is like, I remember yesterday, I think on the news, I saw when they were talking about the state focusing on the inequities given the vaccines to different communities. I think when they interviewed the chair of the NAACP, he said that he was at first hesitant. And then he went and like bet on it and stuff and then he decided to take it. And I agree, I feel when it comes from, yeah, I was skeptic, I did, I did not think this is a good idea, then I changed my mind because so so and so does convince more than, yes, all vaccines are great, you should take it.
Alright, thank you so much, Dr. Basil. I think you put in a lot of work on this and you made it a lot broader than I thought, because I kept saying myths about the vaccine and my mind was limited to the few reasons why immigrant communities have been presenting. Uh, why the vaccine should not be taken, but I think you did put in a lot of work on it. I appreciate you a lot. I think the myths sound like just a subset, a small subset of what you worked on because you actually expanded on that. And that is great, like we have presented. I was looking at something like in my community, I know about people saying that, oh, you take that vaccine, you cannot get a baby uh, anymore, or you take that vaccine, you'll go to hell. And those are some of the reasons why people were putting, uh, putting forward for not taking the vaccine and that was making a lot of people hesitant. So thank you very much again for that. If we look at our agenda, the next thing after presenting this message was deliberating on the message presented, which we might have already started talking about it. So anything more we want to deliberate on this rich information that Dr. Basil has presented?
May, may I fill you in on some of what the state and the city are doing? So that we see that um, this, this wonderful presentation very much dovetails. It correlates to a lot of what is worrying um, the, the team Kentucky, what is worrying the local mayor and, and health department. And some of the things that I want to clarify is that we are getting a lot of questions and you will be getting a lot of questions on where can I get the vaccine and when? We don't know, no one knows because we don't have the vaccine. And so the big worry for the leaders of the city and the state is getting vaccines, getting it here. They are saying distribution is not a problem. There's all kinds of plans in place that will get the distribution out as fast, because this has to happen quickly. Uh, with, with uh, um, some counties don't have the resources that we have for mobility, et cetera. So we're, we're in a rather privileged area where we have people that are responding to our where we need the vaccine the most. We are going to be focusing on that. Uh, but we cannot answer questions uh, when we don't have the answers and we don't want to give more misinformation. We just need people to be patient and to know if we put in place that communication. Uh, because all of this is all about communicating accurate information, trusted information. And so um, what Dr. Tushan was talking about in terms of if we can get those stories out to um, our African communities, our Middle Eastern communities, even our Asian community, anybody needs that reaffirmation, that this is real, this has happened locally. Um, and uh, I think that, that if your aunt and uncle decide to do this uh, for our community here. It's very easy for, I think, and I'm, and I'm speaking out of turn, because I'm saying it's very easy for Victor to send them a link and he can, he can tape them if, because he's done that for me. I'm, I'm useless at, you know, photographing or videotaping myself. And so Victor has been very, very helpful in that regard, so I would, I would hope that we could call on him yet again. But I do want to state that um, there is, there are two things coming up that I'd like for uh, this committee to be aware of and to participate fully in. Uh, one is that the state, uh, the governor's uh, task force on the COVID nineteen. Um, they are rolling out the, the vaccine as quickly as possible. And that kind of information needs to get to the public. And so what they're doing is having local kind of town hall meetings where they present maps of how they're rolling out the distribution. And they talk about um, the, the reality of rolling that out uh, for maybe about ten minutes. And then they open up the, the forum uh, to, to local people to ask questions very directly from them. And wouldn't it be wonderful if we could have um, some of our community leaders be able to um, just directly question um, the state uh, task force? And I understand that they're trying to get um, uh, former uh, mayor Jim Gray, he's now the secretary of, of transportation to be one of the people, he's recognizable locally to, to a lot of locals. But I did ask if we could have um, multilingual or if we could have you know, trusted community faces on there. So the people that I was talking to had to go back because they have a, a pre-done format and, and, and they're so concerned about the, the right message getting out. That I think that what we may need to propose is, is what uh, Basil's presentation is getting at, is that locally, we use the, um, the factual messaging and get it across linguistically and culturally appropriately. Given time, because that has, that takes a little bit of time to arrange. Uh, we cannot have, uh, we can't guarantee that there will be instant accurate uh, interpreting uh, of messaging from the state. And so tha- that's just a dialogue that I would like to have with you all. Um, and, and how do we do that and how do we go the next step from what the state is trying to do to inform us? How do we then inform multilingually and culturally appropriately? And so I would really ask everyone here to be a participant. And when, once we get the link and once we get um, uh, the forum uh, with the state's COVID nineteen task force, that you all participate. You all are very knowledgeable, you all are following this very closely. And if we can get uh, community members to call in and, and have some, some uh, questions that have been posed even in this, in this a very excellent presentation, there are some excellent questions here. And so one of the things that I really liked about Basil's presentation is that he points out what is missing from our local messaging. It's like, uh, other people aren't gonna know, what, what do you mean, let's do it? Let's do what, right? We're talking about the vaccine, let's at least mention vaccines. Um, so it's, it's, um, I, I think it's a it's imperative that this committee and, and people who are so involved. Um, including maybe uh, our other committees of um, outreach. And uh, because they are, they are facing these barriers that you're pointing out.
I, I need to leave you all, um, my other meeting just started, it just beeped and let me know what I can do, please, and if we can maybe have preliminary minutes or an action plan of deliverable sent right after the meeting, instead of waiting for the minutes, that would probably be helpful. Take care, y'all.
Thank you, Dr. Brody.
So it would be a good idea to have some action plans after deliberating on, on perhaps the, the presentation. Uh, my last question really has to do, I have two, two questions uh, to pose to you all. One is, uh, if anybody else saw that webinar from Welcoming America, there was a really great um, art project. Did you see that? And it really fired me up, because I, when I talk to uh, young immigrant parents, they're telling me they would love something like that, because they're so proud of their children's artwork, number one. You know, and, and that really gets them talking to their friends, to their family, to their neighbors, they send it out on Facebook, they, you know. So it is one way to overcome that barrier of we send out these great flyers and there they stay. They don't really get that massive word of mouth distribution that can happen when people are excited about something. And so I think that the reason uh, behind the high success of, of communicating with people of languages of lesser diffusion, Nepali and, and other languages like that. Uh, maybe because the, the parents were able to communicate the message, the, the, the direct message that was sent. And, and just maybe their reasoning was that, look how proud I am of my child winning this, but, but really the result was so effective, don't you think? And so I've talked to a couple of people in the mayor's office about that, particularly Heather Lyon, who is head of um, uh, the arts and culture, um, and she's so knowledgeable and she pointed out several things that are very important. Uh, one is that working maybe with art teachers uh, would be a good idea. Uh, because I was thinking in terms of working with ESL teachers, uh, but working maybe in tandem with um, art teachers and with um, uh, the ESL, people who would know which languages we need to focus on. And perhaps if we get that feedback, maybe we can have appropriate translations. Um, so one of the things I'm looking for is funding, uh, to be able to give monetary prizes. Uh, and one thing that, that was suggested also was what about providing a prize for the winning art teacher? Because they have to provide their own funds for the material that their children use in their classrooms. And wouldn't it be wonderful if this project was able to channel some of maybe a a grant fund or or some donation funds to the winning art teachers or just for participating? Um that they might win a small stipend. But certainly, if you think that that would be worth pursuing, uh Basal, you're in the best uh position really within this committee to to see who do we contact, what do we do, what's possible, what's not possible. Um doing art during the time of COVID is a challenge of its own, right, virtually? So um that really needs to be decided by the art teachers and and um the, can the children do it and what age groups can do it? But my focus would be not so much on, I mean, I don't want to exclude anybody. And and I think that African-American communities could participate very nicely and with this concept. Um so it's for local people, absolutely. Um but in the back of my mind is the maybe hundred and twenty or thirty or forty languages that are represented in the public schools learning English, that they don't have a large uh Arabic-speaking, either Muslim or Christian base, or a large um, you know, French-speaking or Swahili-speaking community where they can, uh they have community leaders, etc. I'm talking about the very small groups that may not have that support for for from community leaders. And it's just maybe family units, um less than four hundred, a hundred to four hundred uh people. But we don't want them, if they have elderly population, we don't want them to miss out on that. And so um this is another way that we could um dovetail with the distribution of the COVID book for kids so that parents and children can understand it because it's been translated to twelve languages. And and by the way, I do want you to know that there, there is a lot of information, um not only written about the the, from the CDC and it's uh information on the vaccines, very detailed information in about twelve or thirteen languages. But what I love about it is that they also have voiced information. So there are people that may not be able to read, uh eh can listen. Maybe they have a a um uh an issue with with um they don't have computers or they don't have, uh this can be passed into the community through um, you know, WhatsApp and all the other means so that they can listen by, on their phones. Uh it it is very confusing, but it's very nicely done. And if you would go in and look at the Arabic and and see if you approve, right? Because I listened to French and and Spanish and and I thought it was well done. But, you know, everybody has um um has to look at their own languages. So the last thing that that um on the local uh mobile vaccines, um I did ha, I did go into a meeting yesterday with the same group that we met with, uh Basal, with the Giamas. And um my question to them was uh in preparation for when we do have vaccines, maybe mid-March, uh for maybe the Hispanic community, um where? Uh you know, I've recommended certain things in in the um mayor's office. And but I want the consensus, I want more feedback from our community members. And so if if you feel that we need to have something that lands down, something at somewhere else, please give me that um feedback from as many of the different uh language groups as possible. That that would be very, very helpful to us. Um.
All right, I'm uh, oh, thank, thank you all. Thank you, Isabel, thank you so much. For what uh you brought in. And uh I'm so sorry, we may not have kept to our time here because it's almost ten, just two minutes uh till ten. Uh but if we can use the two minutes left uh to still do some useful work because it will not serve us well if we have all this beautifully presented and we don't make use of it. So we're talking about uh the uh the plan, plan of action, how we can put this to work. So let's use it under the uh timeline and uh meeting, meeting dates. So uh Dr. Basal, like we had talked from the beginning, like the way you saw this would work, we're going to come up with what we agree on. And then uh use some uh the outreach committee as a tool to um uh help, help spread it out. So that's the way to make it work, to put it into action. Uh so can we make an agreement here on uh that meeting with the uh outreach committee? I don't know if we need a a quorum for us to take any decision now. I doubt we have any quorum now.
I don't, I I don't think you need a quorum in a committee. I I think just a consensus um to, if if you want action items, uh maybe what do you want to do with the presentation? Uh what do you, what steps do you want to do uh to move forward? What what are actionable items from from the discussion?
Right. So uh we, thank you, Isabel. So with this information then, if we should move on, what do we agree we can uh take action on?
Uh I actually have a question for Isabel. Did you, like that flyer program that I take my vaccine for, like, did you know what I was referencing?
I've seen that and and I, and I'll look for it and I'll send it out uh to everyone as soon as I find it.
Do you know, eh, is it like a state campaign, a city camp, like I?
I have a feeling it's, I have a feeling it's what you described. I have a feeling it's, it's the downtown Lexington, um what are they called the? I don't remember if if Melissa remembers, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask um Craig in in the mayor's office. He'll know uh pretty quickly, I think.
Downtown Lexington Partnership.
Okay, so uh maybe it might be on their website?
I looked for like an hour yesterday and like news articles and I'm like, I know what I'm looking, I know what it looks like, but I, I couldn't find them anywhere. Because I feel part of the action plan, like an effective part, would be partnering with that organization, whoever they are, like seeing the flyers they have, uh seeing if we have like any suggestions for like different faces or adding languages and then working in tandem with the outreach committee of, you know, we have this great partner. Now we have those like amazing flyers that were toward like targeting those communities. Could you please, since you've been working on like finding ambassador and trusted local sources in the neighborhood, use that vessel to distribute that information, make sure that those flyers are visible? I feel like that could be a good action plan.
Okay, so can we restate that? Number one, action plan?
Uh working on partnering with the organization that started the I Take My Vaccine For campaign and then working in tandem with them on making sure either A, they already have flyers in languages that cover the communities we want to target and have people on them who look like the communities we want to target. If not, either suggest they add that if they're capable or work through like the mayor's office or whoever on adding that. And then once we have this step, once we have those flyers, work with the outreach committee so they can use the vessel they have in place through their ambassador and local sources so they can distribute those flyers, make sure that they are in churches, mosques, synagogues, they are in grocery stores, they are in restaurants where people go and congregate so they see them.
All right, uh, thank you. And I think part of the action to like Isabel had pointed out uh would be to try to come up with this, some communities that we think uh need to be reached more. Like she's mentioned, there are some communities that may not be too much of a concern because they have better presentation than others. So that uh when we uh like relaying this uh action plan, we also have suggestion on which communities uh uh more underserved that need more of the service. Okay. Yeah.
What do you think about the um uh the art project, Basal? Is that something that that you might be willing to explore?
Yeah, I I I reach out. I, like, when I saw that, I loved it too, the Welcoming America presentation. I wasn't sure how like feasible the unit would be, so I love that you loved it and you think it is. So no, I, because like another benefit I see is when the kids are at home working on that art project, like their family members are likely to ask them like, hey, what you working on? And when they tell them like that in and of itself is a way of distributing information about the vaccine, is a way to raise awareness. And I do agree that having a prize for the art teacher along with the children is great because at the end of the day, the art teacher will probably be the biggest driving force. Maybe even like at the end, like, once we have a winner or something, there can be even a story in the local news about it, if that's possible.
So one of the ways that we could look at narrowing um who is going to participate in terms of language assistance and and our narrower focus, um it, it might be, we, we have at Global X as, I think, a study of the schools that have the highest number uh of language learners. And maybe we could touch bases with um those uh ESL or art teachers um to see if they're interested and and to get them in on the planning of it. Because the the logistics and the strategy is going to be very difficult for everyone, I think.
Do you know, because I don't have, like, I know ESL, for example, there's like a centralized ESL office that, you know, you can reach like from Lordy Bowen or Lisa Helen Brandt and then that information like disseminate downward. Is, is there something comparable with art? Like, is there someone, this internal office, like a director of like arts program? Or no, it has to be individual like art teachers in schools?
I really don't know, honestly. And and I know that that um uh Heather Lyons has a lot of communication with high school and middle school art teachers because there's, there's so many programs over the years that they participate in. Um so if we could ask her to help us touch bases and maybe they could tell us if there's a central uh thing. Um I know, I know we probably should get a hold of the ESL central office person, who would that be?
I mean, either Lordy Bowen or Lisa Helen Brandt. And I know, I mean, I I'd be more than happy to, I know Dr. Brody said she has a close relationship. I obviously have a close relationship too, so like, I mean, either of us, I'm sure we'd be happy.
Yeah, so if you would be willing to explore it and and just by email, don't you think, uh Mr. Aqua, to to report back by email to see if we can move forward with that rather than than calling? It's up to you all, but.
Yes, yes, email, e- email will be good.
Okay.
But uh just so one question for you, Isabel, like the art project, you were saying we uh can work on that. What are you suggesting the committee can do to uh contribute to that, uh making that happen?
Well, number one, uh do you think that the, our communities would be interested? The parents, you know, touch base with the the people who have young children, would they be interested in participating? Eh, do you think that this is a project that this committee can bring to the MEAC? Or do, would you rather it be Global X that that do this?
Okay, yeah, so uh so for this now, because we are out of time, I suggest, because we're talking about timeline for uh this uh action plan, I suggest we discuss it more in our next meeting. And just like we're saying, we've already wrote out a vaccine. Uh we're thinking about losing a lot of time. I think it will still be uh useful when we discuss this in April because I think this vaccine will be going on for the entire year. And uh like we had discussed during the meeting, these problems that we are bringing up now are not so much the most pressing problems now. They are problems later because the people who are still willing, the people who are willing to take the vaccine who are not affected uh uh by this vaccine hesitancy problem, uh it is not coming off a big issue now because we almost see Russian in vaccines. But when everybody who is willing to take the vaccine would have come up, what about this other people who for some reasons um they are hesitant taking the vaccines? So I think still working in April to come up with this information and roll it out then, I think it will still be useful. That's why I'm suggesting that it may not be a bad idea to wait till our next meeting in April. But uh besides that, um starting to work with the outreach committee, Dr. Basel, do you uh suggest it is worthwhile to straight away start contacting the outreach committee before our next meeting? Or we need to have everything in place before we engage them?
I think we need to have everything in place before we engage them. And I know they're working on setting up like their committee too. So they probably have like some, when's the date for the next meeting?
Our, our next meeting will be on the twenty ninth of April.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I mean, what does everyone else, do you think that's too late? Or do you think, because like for now, not everyone can take the vaccine anyway. But optimally, we want to have our efforts when everyone is ready to take the vaccine. So do we think that's like a good end of April to like really start enforcing that campaign or do we think it needs to happen earlier?
Don't have a problem waiting till April. Okay. All right, oh, well, welcome, Diana. You muted.
Uh, don't mean to interrupt, just dropping by to say hello, that's all, for a few minutes.
Yeah, you, you got us because we went a little above time. We planned the meeting for one hour. And I want to appreciate uh everybody for uh being patient enough for us to go up a little bit above time. But if it is possible, because we had other matters, I wanted to treat this as a matter of uh an issue of other matter like Isabel had asked earlier. So now that you're here, uh Ms. Queen, you may help with that. It's about our minutes of uh our first meet, uh meeting. I was suggesting that we post our meeting, the minutes as they are. And then in that way, it's fine to share it with the public. Is that all right? Uh is there anything against doing that that you'll be aware of?
You know, um, not from my perspective, um, you know, as long as you're comfortable with them, you feel like they're accurate. And that, you know, just kind of seeing it from the public's view and lens, you know, as you read the minutes. I always kind of read minutes from like if uh the newspaper were reading them. You know, the newspaper people were reading them and, you know, if I go over all of that and I feel confident in that accuracy from that perspective, then I go forward. That's how I kind of make that decision.
All right. Okay, uh, thank you. Thank you then. So anybody of the. Thank you then. So anybody of the, maybe I don't have an objection. And if anybody has an objection, you speak out. Isabel, I'm proposing that we post the minutes.
Okay, can can we do as as Diana Queen suggested and just give them a real quick review, editing, and then and then post?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yes.
I would just add to that, that, you know, at the end of the day, people love this, probably this idea of having these meetings recorded and being able to listen to them. You know, some people might want to do a cursory read. I don't know if Isabel has talked with you about this truncated kind of short version I have that I sent along for, you know, meeting notes so that we can reduce the time that is spent, you know, on capturing information in meetings. You know, it's and then, but anyway, there's a form that I sent to her. Isabel, did you, Ms. Taylor, did you? I don't know if you talked about this or not, so I don't want to cover.
We haven't talked about them. I will send them to Mr. Aqua and and the rest of the committee members. And I'll be happy to incorporate today's minutes into that format so they can see how it works.
Yes, because I think if we can step away from this very laborious, you know, I know how big a job that is. I've done minutes. So I get it. I really understand. But I think if we can try to find a format that gives enough information, just enough, and then also if you're comfortable in having your meetings recorded, this should provide you with a nice balance of feeling like you can work on the things at hand. And, you know, maybe and and make it a little easier not to have to, you know, regurgitate everything, you know, that you've said during the course of a meeting and in meeting notes, you know, that's a big job. So, you know.
So may I ask about the action items? Just to make sure that we're all on the same page, action items that I recorded work on partnering with the organization that did I Take My Vaccine Because. Find that, number one, find the organization and the flyers that Dr. Duchan liked. Number two, find the communities that may have higher than normal language barriers because they're smaller and and don't have the support. I think that this is part of really what the outreach committee is doing. So if you don't mind, I'm on that committee too. I will discuss this with Dr. Maskey. Because this, this is a topic that was discussed at their meeting. And so this may be an action item that they're already covering. Is that all right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then number, number three that I wrote down was Dr. Tashawn is willing to explore the children's art project. And a prize for art teachers and winning the winning child. And so contacting the the Fayette County Public School, the appropriate personnel there to see if that would work. Otherwise, I think we might need to go through churches and and faith-based groups to see if they would like to support this.
I think a big part though, which goes, I know we haven't decided on that, like, will this come through Global Lex, our committee, like when I reached the public school system, like they'll probably want to know, like, hey, there's this program, I'm willing to partner with it. They probably want to know who's in charge of this program. So did we agree on that? Like, who will be running it, providing those like monetary prizes, et cetera?
Well, I think that Global Lex is always willing to be a partner or take the lead if if it becomes too much for for the committee.
Okay, so it's okay to use that name with the public school system then? Like, there's this program?
It is with, it is with me. We're in, we're in an exploratory stage, right? So we want some feedback and see who's who likes the 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 project. Mr. Aqua then suggested to defer further meetings until the 29th, which is and and I fully concur because he he's stressing the fact that right now there is a scarcity of the vaccine. And so doing furious work right now, we're not quite sure when it's going to be available, so we can't answer the main question that people have right now. But I think that we can certainly do some, a little bit of email going back and forth to prep for that meeting, if if that's all right with the chair.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's all right. That's all right with me. And email is fine. With email, we can also communicate a lot without necessarily compelling everybody to come around together. I agree, we can continue communicating by email walking up to that meeting.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Just, I wanted to ask about if you all, I know Ms. McCart Smith, and maybe you've already addressed this, Mr. Aqua and I'm so but wanted to know about a schedule of meetings for the year. Is or at least as many as you have can schedule forward. So we can put that on the website so people know when to attend in advance or perhaps do some planning. Is, was that a part of it? I mean, I just didn't know if you all had talked about that yet or not.
Talk about that. And I think I had sent an email to Melissa. I think I was just looking at that email today and it looks like I made a mistake, but I think I posted that or something that showed a meeting date. That showed April the 29th, July the 29th, and October the 25th. Accurate.
Yes, I've posted all of those. This is the only committee that I've gotten the dates from, so.
Oh, fantastic. Well, we're going to work on that, Melissa, to get everybody else from the other committees to get your dates. I mean, you know, that's one thing. The other, only other comment, and then I'm not gonna try and, I just wanted to stop in case you had a question or two or whatever, you know, any follow-up kind of stuff. But I wanted to just say that as you all consider the vaccine and the public health piece and everything, I would only offer that I hope that you'll think about other situations, you know what I mean, similar to COVID or some other emergencies that are on it, separate and apart from COVID-19, I would just encourage that because that way you can lay out a plan for the the international community about how this always works. You know, I mean, there you see that sense of of consistency that may be important as it relates to any and all public health matters and how you prioritize those, you know, how MEAC prioritizes those to some degree. I just offer that as a thought. So just respectfully, I'll offer that as a thought, Mr. Aqua and and committee members.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. We have that as food for thought. And I just want to observe again that we went over our time limit now by 21 minutes, and I want to appreciate everybody for that. And if we're using this for testing, you forgive me, we've not held these meetings a lot. And we're getting to learn, I think, next ones, we'll make them to us. So with that, I want to maybe if anybody can move for us to adjourn?
Let's have one final quick point, if you don't mind. About Ms. Taylor's action plan point, do we think we want to add one about, like, if we agree on the whole having people kind of record an interview or something with Radio Lex, so we can counter the misinformation that focuses on the I think a C safety cost and all of that? Do we want to work on recruiting people who are doing that? So we can maybe like finalize that plan before the next meeting and then coordinate with Radio Lex for the recording and everything? Like, is that something we want to do? And if so, do we want that added to our action plan?
We're talking about like questions to a few people in the public that can be broadcast like in Global Lex or Radio or?
Yes, like in addition, so like if the approach can be to like two approaches, one via flyers, word of mouth and stuff, just like distributing the vaccine in general is safe, effective, here's where you take it. And then a more detailed approach, here's how effective it is, here why it is safe. So people, if you're talking to someone and they're like, well, you shouldn't take the vaccine because you'll get like autism or you'll get something. And then you're like, no, but like you should, you can show them someone. Or we can have a trusted local, a trusted locally sourced information sources that people can like circulate on WhatsApp, on Facebook, instead of like the misinformation that's flooding that space.
Okay, I think I think that would be a good idea when we can hear people in their own words pronounce some of this. Yes, it's a yes for me. We could add that to the action plan.
Okay, it's added.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Brazil. Can someone move for us to adjourn, please?
Everybody wants to stay, Mr. Aqua. They just want to to keep going.
I mean, I would, I'm not sure, honestly, I'm not sure with the technicalities of these, like, since I'm not a commissioner, just like a member of this committee, like, can I or no? Like, these things are restricted to commissioners?
You can move.
Like I'm the only commissioner here now for this committee.
Oh, okay. Well, I second if that's possible, then. I wasn't sure if that's possible or not.
Are you a commissioner?
I'm not, no.
No, I mean, Rainya. And Rainya, I also want to apologize for misrecognizing you for Dr. Rashid at the start of the meeting. I thought you were Dr. Rashid. I'm sorry. I get a problem with faces.
Who else is on your committee? What other commissioners? Is it Dr. Rashid?
Dr. Brody was, I mean, yes, Dr. Brody was here with us. She left just like a few minutes to 10 because she had to attend another meeting. But the other people we have for this committee are Dr. Rashid, Dr. Butrus. And I, I think that's it. Dr. Brody, Dr. Rashid, and Dr. Butrus.
Okay, thank you.
So if I'm the only committee member then, and it has to be done by a committee member, then I'm moving that we adjourn this meeting. Okay. And thank you again, everyone.
Bye, y'all.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.